Oh, that's cool.
Thanks to Charlie. I will bring it next.
All right.
Yeah, if you want to just write your email.
Yep, I will, yes.
Spray it in with, yeah, we're down in the bottom.
Yep.
Yes, because I wrote Ashley next to it. Is he a junior?
No.
Okay, we're now live. So. To tell the meeting. Meeting the board at.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, right on the dot.
In terms of the agenda. I will remind you that there was a new one put in your mailbox because of the time of the next meeting is now seven o'clock. So that is there. As far as the agenda on the whole business, this is mostly for the benefit of Amanda, but for our own business, we will also be talking about the facility, the ad hoc facilities today. Before we get started, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, we got a lovely letter from Concerns, you know, saying, thanking us for the donations and getting them, and specifically calling out our Mary, who has two drives down to one. So we're just going to pass that around if people wanted to. So that said, I look around, I do not see any members of the public. So I guess we'll move directly into a couple of the minutes, Amanda.
So. At all of the meetings that's been tried. Hopefully, we can have Mary's help, and I don't think I'm putting out any achievements except very important things. And when I didn't. So if you see the little post-it notes, please just ignore those, I thought I got rid of them. But, um, uh, so like to make a motion. January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, number four. Second, yeah, or sorry.
Okay, so I would, okay, so we'll make a motion. Approve them, Kami, a second. Katie. And any question? I will call the motion. All those in favor of approving the minutes of January seventeenth, board meeting. Any opposed? Pass as unanimous.
Great job, by the way.
Yeah.
Nice, so we had an excellent mentor.
Yeah.
And I actually was impressed with those little post-it notes, you know, I said, where did they come from?
Yeah. Then I saw emails, I'm like, oh no, they're still there.
Okay, Katie, I move on to treasures report.
All right, sorry. We're going to open on the store. What are your words?
Well, first, did anyone have any questions or comments?
Want to commend you, it's a beautiful treasure.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Um, yeah, I just, I highlighted what, what I thought was, um, just kind of an overview, first of all. Um, where we're at, and then the one budget line that was unusually high, but with justification. And then, um, anything that was under a thousand dollars, I left off, but anything that was over a thousand dollars, I did include with explanation. Um, and then noteworthy as well was the final unemployment payment to our former employee. Um, has been paid, so that is no longer an expense that we will be shouldering. Um, that was really.
Randy. Look, um, right with. That in mind, and I would entertain someone to make the motion to accept the off warrant to the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents. That would be Charlie. A second, Mary. Any questions, conversation, any discussion on that motion?
Just, are people comfortable with this format?
Yes.
Yes, this is very good.
Yeah, yes, yes, okay, yes, okay.
You mean up your report?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I will forward, sign another one if I can.
Okay, um, any other discussion? If not, I will. I'm going to ask for a vote, uh, your motion to accept the off warrant and the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents. Who's in favor? Any opposed, all in unanimous. Now we move on to the warrant. Anybody want to make a motion about authorizing the president to sign the warrant? Okay, Kami, make the motion a second. Charlie. The discussion on the warrant. Which was the audit. And more than larger expenses. Do you vote on that motion? All those in favor? In the opposition, no, unanimous. Okay, finally, the year nine percent over, I will entertain a motion to approve the financials, there's nine percent in here. Charlie, stop that one, any second. Also, Mary, the discussion. I entertain a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. You don't have to ask opposed if it's unanimous, but, okay.
A great job.
Yeah.
There's a lot to think, a lot to think about. It's just a little bit easier to be easier. You did a great job. Is that the format where the dollar change?
That's different.
I like the dollar change year over year.
Yeah, yes, we wanted that there because it, it helps me to see if it's appropriate. Because I don't really have any sort of baseline, so by looking at the year to year, then I can say, oh, this is unusually high, this is unusually low, this is above ground, so. That's why we have that.
I, I like it.
Okay, now we'll move into the committee reports, admin.
I unfortunately didn't attend. But I did put a list together, which I guess before an agenda, which became the guide for what the group did. And I thank Lynn for leading it, and there was minutes, doing the minutes, which looked pretty good. Uh, does anybody have any questions or anything they want to discuss further on? Why, it's going to be a.
Water treatment, no. There's the water treatment contract.
We do have some motions. Yeah, when we need to.
Okay.
That the committee was bringing forward. They're on either this or here. I mean, I can ask, you want me to just ask anybody? For the committee, you'll be the first.
Yeah, the first one is the makes a motion to authorize the director to sign the one-year contract with being a water trim in. Um, which is basically the same as last year for thirty-eight years.
And Amanda, you don't have to put that current part in the motion, nine-year, in the motion, in the minutes. I can put the, sorry.
What's in the note, the little note, which is.
Oh, okay, guys, that doesn't have to be, that was just for information. I was going to say, coming, I mean, I believe I'm right, I believe coming from the committee, we already require.
A second. The committee makes the motion.
And that, but we'll ask for a second.
We ask for a second.
So is there someone who will second it? That would be Charlie.
Charlie is.
He's got a lot of energy, Charlie. Charlie, now, is there any discussion, so we have a first and a second, any discussion about this? This is, maybe they are the ones who keep legionnaires, and we have to make sure there's no legionnaires and test this water.
Howard, what are they called, cooling towers?
Yeah. Water.
The non-dictionary person, I have all of that.
It's something that has come up in recent years, we've been doing it before, but we did treatment of the testing that goes with it now.
Okay, any other questions about it? If not, we can vote, all those in favor of signing, authorizing the sign. Okay, it's unanimous.
Second one is, um, we did, um, meet, Timlin had a discussion on the Ulan contract, and how it was calculated and what went into it. Last. It was after the last, not the committee, the training. And, um, and I believe the committee is satisfied at this point, and the reality is not that we can do it, but, so we authorized the president to sign the twenty-twenty contract.
So coming from the committee, I'm seeking a second. Kami? Any more discussion on that? The five percent increase for twenty twenty-three, and we also just authorized even the first of those, we signed the contract, but paid the first quarter. E, did, did they give any justification with the, what was their direction?
Basically, what it was is that, uh, they developed a formula that was based on usage and other factors that went across the board. But then. We, they had a limiting factor of a max of five percent, based on our usage of their services and everything a little bit more. I think we saved like three thousand dollars from further increase. Based on their formula, so. Now, what went into the formula and everything? There was a sort of wishy-washy discussion, but it's.
There are always winners, you know, depending on what of the statistics they use. And I guess the piece I took away from it is our success at being a high circulation library that is loved by all is.
Costing us money.
Costing us money, because it is one of the main factors that was used in the formula. So I certainly would not trade dual circulation, but it's unfortunate that that's such an important piece of the formula.
Is that something that, wait, I know that our focus for the strategic plan is going to be our online versus in-person usage, is this something that that could address later on?
Uh, they, this is the first formula change they have put together in several years, five, eight, seven, or 10 years, so I doubt, they hurt, and I felt that they hurt us. And I think that there's a small chance that they will look at. Fine tuning the formula maybe for next year, based on our input.
He sits there and he, yeah, my feeling is that what they do is they develop a formula, they have twenty-eight libraries, ranging from a library that runs on a few thousand dollars, volunteers and such. So to all day, which is huge, and it's, he does his best to try and come up with. A formula that he can justify to each library, whether it's in charge.
It's not apples to apples.
It's not apples to apples, if you really went apples to apples to little libraries, it just won't.
And I mean, there is another piece of it, which has to do with buildings, because there are some libraries that the building and all of the costs of the space they operate in. Isn't part of their budget, because they're a, you know, they're a municipal building, and that also factors. So there is a number of.
Because it goes in the total budget.
Right, so there are a number of factors, and it just happened that in the formula pieces they picked. It was not advantageous to ease creatures like that, but we were capped below what it would have been, a garb or that's a word, so we capped at five percent, so it wasn't worse. So, any more discussion, questions? Now I'll entertain a vote to authorize the president of the board to sign the twenty twenty-three. They're all in favor, unanimous. Okay, services committee.
Along that same, that was the same here, but it's an awesome job. I've listened to her like three years, with her person not being ready, was me. It's a very strict. Thank you, thank you, Kami, for doing the minutes.
Oh, it looks like you had a fairly good meeting from minutes, and I would say, I mean, everyone got them. I don't know if anyone had questions about anything that was in them. Um, so there's a couple of motions for us to entertain, that we, as the service committee, would like to recommend. As a committee, when we make motions.
Sure.
So the service committee moves to approve the exhibits policy, which was revised in. Where that is.
Coming from a committee, I need a second. It would be Charlie, but let it be Michael. This is my. Okay, any discussion about that, any questions? Can you just sort of give us a?
Oh, it's for, yeah, the exhibits policy is, um, it relates to the artwork and, um. The artist that hangs things in the library.
Well, it adds a big room to it, right?
And it adds, right, we added, yeah, we added the.
The meeting room to it. So it just gives guidelines as to what people were going to be, or who want to place their work in the library. That the, the library does work, and it costs. And there's some insurance in terms of anything, which I thought was a good piece. If anything happens to their materials or property, the library is not responsible for any of it, they are, you know, store their stuff. Again, and there's also, um, uh, an opportunity for anyone who does not, you know, the exhibits is a part of it. They can file something with Jill. Then, I think one of the policies I would do, the board has to respond to. Real policies.
So if anybody, if anybody has any ideas or knows of people who would like to exhibit here, we now have an additional space, so please spread the word.
And when will you start that deal, please?
Well, Paul started, um, installing it today, so I'm not sure if he was able to finish it or not. But very soon, we'll be able to, you know, get everything up on the website once this is approved and we'll start.
It will be in like the next newsletter, you'll say promptly.
It's an e-newsletter for sure.
Any other future student partners?
Yes, and that, well, we are hoping that that will be a great space for, for kids to do artwork. I think opening with the kids, and, so the difference between the meeting room and now here is that. Everybody sees this all the time in the meeting room, it'll be limited by meetings.
And also, if we can have an event that's around.
Which would be great, so they can have an event right with their artwork, which sometimes there's been challenges and there's been. You know, the artists want to, you know, have a, a group right in the hallway, which disrupts traffic flows, this will allow that. So we're looking for it. Special thanks to, um. Susan, Kathy, and Paul for their work on this.
Any other questions, discussion? Not all those in favor? Okay, then.
Oops, unanimous, I'm sorry.
It's a learning process, okay. Okay, uh, we have another.
Yes, the MOU, so, um, this.
That's the MOU with the friends.
Yes.
I think the motion should include some reference to the friends. Is that right, as it's written?
It was in the next one.
Well, I'm guessing the next one.
What they most natural motion does, you're right, I think that. It probably looked.
It says.
It's kind of memo, MOU between the friends, you know.
But that's, that's not, it should say that again.
They should say that, they should say that. It should say that.
Oh, you're right, it might just be a typo, but we can adjust.
There's two motions, and one.
Well, the second one is that.
It's to just. Services committee author, oh, that's the author.
It will present it to the friends.
So you could move it, and then someone could adjust.
There you go, okay, so any, coming from committee, we have a motion, any second on that, thank you.
Sure, sir.
Okay, Michael, and so now, would anybody, so I think you have then amended, okay, anybody want to amend title?
Yes.
Thank you.
amended to include reference to the friends.
The library or just the friends?
I'm not, yeah, say MOU between the library and the friends.
Now we have to vote on the amendment, we have to get a second on the amendment, or just? So let's vote on the amendment, everyone who approves of changing the motion to add between the library and the friends. I'll just fill out. On the vote, you know. That's unanimous, so the amendment is approved, oh, my, so now let's go back to any discussion on the idea, which is to approve this MOU as the board. Talk about it a little, Mary?
I just heard again.
Kami or Amanda or?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was something that's been floating around for a while. And we wanted to get something down in writing that kind of. Establishes the relationship between the library and the friends, um, what the friends can expect from the library, what the library can expect from the friends. Um, and, you know, the, the board's role in the library. I just think it's good publicity, and I'm, and I'm.
It is, it's been covered a few times in the trainings that we've had as in terms of trainings for best practices to, to maybe clear with the goal. Friends versus the library, and to some extent, the trustees. Other discussion?
I, I have a question. The specific case. Is putting that in here. Has this been correlated to with what's in our documentation? As to what roles the director plays and the trustee to play?
Existing policies?
Existing policies.
Think in our bylaws, um, so that, if that's what you're saying?
Yeah, so, and I, I, this needs to correlate with our bylaws, and. I guess we follow that trustee manual, what's outlined as our role and the library director role, there's nothing in here that.
Contradicts.
That contradicts that.
I don't know that I, I personally didn't put it next to, you know, but I, I mean, I do think that that's what we kind of use. I read it, and everything in it seemed in line, you know, what that we do, hiring of the directors, we sort of see funding policies. Library operates in the friends, advocating for these laws, but I, I didn't. But whoever you talk.
Met with the bylaws, I can't think of any other policies that the library has that spells something like this out, and it's definitely in agreement with the trustee manual, right?
I think it came. That was the template.
But, you know, if something is, there's nothing saying that this can't be adjusted, if, if something comes up.
Well, if something comes up and policies are changed, we have to remember to come back and.
But this, the policy actually says that every year, this will be reviewed and reviewed first. So that's a good piece, is that if we had done something, I mean, hopefully, as we look to policies, we would look back at this. And just like we think about bylaws, when we update policies, we need to adjust this, unless something inconsistent, I mean, it could well be that the policy gets adjusted. And, and truthfully, the, the MOU is really being the library and the friends, so there's not a whole lot, I mean, the board has the tangential oversight of. Some of the library things, um, so I think if there was something contradictory, we'd be looking at the library policy.
So. Hold on, I'm set, yeah.
No, no.
Should this then really? Be between the friends and the library, so the library director and trustees.
Yes.
Are together?
It is, that MOU, it's, it's, the addendum is just, this is just information.
Clarification.
That clarifies the rules, but it is between the friends and the library, and it says in it that the board is kind of in support of the library. That is not, so we don't have, we are not going to sign these other stuff. But as a kind of like, you know, understanding, just like the contacts and those sorts of things. Authorize, support this, right, to sign.
Well, just, I think we're going to authorize the director, we're going to approve it from our stand, so that's, we're okay with it.
Yes.
Now goes to the friends, and once they're agreeing and vote for it, then, then everybody can sign it.
Two points.
Yeah.
Any more questions and more discussion? And I'll entertain a vote to approve the service, approve the MOU. Yes, presented. All those in favor? And do you have another, um, motion that you wanted to bring forward, Mary?
But I think so extended.
Yeah, and if I have, no, we just.
No, we just, we didn't want to.
Yes. I will, I can present a motion. Um, so. With the amended version.
Yes.
Well, actually, it's in what we've done, as, as presented. The service committee authorizes the library director to present the MOU to the friends board for consideration.
Coming from committee, I need a second, that would be Charlie. And any discussion about this? What can I say?
Should this be the service committee that authorizes the director, or should this be the board that authorizes the director?
Now it has, yes.
Because once we've approved it, yes, the board.
Actually, I hate to say it, it was more than appears, but that's.
Recommends that the board authorize.
Really, all of these options should be signed, and they really all. For the books of the.
The service committee recommends to the board.
The more, yes, but then. Correct, but now the, my motion really has to be that the board approves the exhibit policy, and the board approves, approves the MOU, right?
I think it's the service committee recommends to approve, to recommends that board approve, right? Is that what each, each motion should say, yeah, what they, what the motions.
That just meant to be what it is.
We got that, Amanda?
I think so, I have some form of it.
Um, and then, so I mean, I just think in terms of discussion. We, no one will sign it until both parties have agreed, is that right? Other questions, any other discussion?
Well, I'm very.
The meeting I didn't go to, I just.
Uh, we can have a vote on this, does the board, uh.
authorize the library director to present this to the friends? unanimous. Moving on. First, are there any questions about the narrative?
I like that it was in alignment with the strategic, we can say we were strategic for the document that we're using. Very helpful and
There are some
And you can email them to me if you have to adjust. Thank you. Okay. A couple of exciting things that are not in the order of course. Circulation for this month, and just in terms of traffic to the library and circulation, it's getting busy. Particularly on the weekends. So we're, we're, people are coming back to the library. We have a thirty-three percent increase in checkouts this year over last year, which is great. Ninety-two percent of them are at checkout desk. And eight percent of them are at the drive-thru window. We had a hundred and two new library card registrations this month. That was after a really big month last month. So we're, we're, it's, it's been really positive. Staff are feeling positive about it. Been busy, which is great, yes.
You're on May.
Yes.
You say we have a hundred and some odd new library cards. Does that count people who are renewing?
That is brand new registrations, not renewals.
Not renewal.
Yep. And they did some kind of programs too, right, that didn't, they went to meetings.
I think we went to Gen X this, this month.
I'm trying to remember exactly what it is, but we did, it's in my report where, where the team went.
Molly was at Winterfest.
It was Winterfest, at golf, thank you. It was Winterfest at golf, thank you. So do you see, is that where you see like all of the Uh, that's part of it, some of it. It's, it's not all. It looks like we had fifty-four new East Green Bush cards, eleven Skoda cards, thirty-two other. So just Rensselaer County. Four My cards, which are kids without parental permission, so the kid's probably coming over on the bus or walking from high school. And then one out-of-system card, so the out-of-system cards come with a fee. That would be Columbia County typically. Not Albany, Rensselaer County. And eighteen online registrations.
Does an online register, do they have to set foot or do they?
Yeah, so they're only valid, I think, for a period of ten days and then they have to come into the library. And we, we've had conversations system-wide about really simplifying the process and do we, do they need to come in at all? Is that, is their value in it or not? So we've had, we have not made any decisions, but there's been a lot of thoughtful conversation and, and research, kind of debating. About the process and are there, you know, this is kind of what we've talked about with strategic planning, are there people that are strictly using the library digitally and is that okay? Considering our everybody training and people might not be able to get to a library, that makes it very accessible. They don't have to set foot in, so.
Not as good as we
Yeah.
So the winter, right now, well, January is, we also have our winter reading. Support to adventure, hundred seventeen adult registry, adults registered for the program, which is great. So all of our reading programs, not just youth programs, keep increasing, which is really nice. And we have, you probably noticed if you've been in the library, the map out there where participants are encouraged to showcase their favorite vacation spots, so that's really cute. And there's a little passport. If you register and you want the paper version, there's a little paper passport. Cut off, another highlight, we had the preschool fair in January twenty-first, that was great first, you know, that was a highlight that we had yearly and we finally brought it back this year. We're thrilled about it and great participation.
That's what got me to come to this library in the first place.
It is.
When we were looking for preschools, we saw the preschool fair twenty-eighteen, and we keep, this is good from this library, we live in Little Park, so.
Oh, wow.
We traveled for that. So, not because of that room, it must have been true, yeah. Preschool fair is fantastic.
That's great. Feedback, I will share that with Jen and Molly and the team. Jen puts on the preschool fair every year. She, she has a great spreadsheet that's been going back years and years with both the preschools and it's great. A couple of highlights that were, that are on our, I've read them to you before, our Patreon feedback page on our staff intranet. February ninth, uh, me, someone posted that we had a patron on the phone calling to get her PIN. So she's so happy that the library budget passed. Loved bringing her grandkids here for the program. She has visions, problems, and our large print section is the best she's ever seen. I thought that was a unique one that was nice to bring to the group. Had another fun one from January. Thank you, Molly and the staff. We missed the library today. Make Your Own Robot kit was a huge favorite. My four-year-old grandson and his mom had fun putting it together. And you'll notice that there's a lot of grandchildren. That's a huge demographic right now, like youth services department is really seeing a shift in their storytimes with who's coming to storytime. A lot of grandparents. I stayed a lot of friends with grandparents when my kids were little and some it like worked with their kid. And some I like stayed friends with the grandmother, but like didn't get it off with the, yeah, like I have a couple of like grandmother friends who I'm still like in touch with, so it is, it's a great resource. We had an interesting year. There's a bee group that came in this month. Did you see them? It was fascinating to me. Now, the Beekeepers Association. How many people came in from all over for the Beekeepers Association?
And came in, you get something from the library, things, and I'm like, there's so many people here. Then I realized it was for the beekeeper and I thought that was beautiful.
Great, it was hot. A couple of other updates. The special thanks to our team here on staff for a lot of flexibility this month because we had several facilities issues that have now been fixed, but this dividing door, our new dividing door was stuck. This bar opened, so the room couldn't be opened like this, so we had to really switch a lot of programs. That was very frustrating. And then this camera, the audience camera, was not working. And we had a hybrid program where you need the presenter camera and the audience, or sorry, that's the presenter camera. The presenter camera and the audience camera, we needed them both. And so there was a lot of just adjusting this month and you know, juggling programs and, and a lot of extra maintenance work, a lot of calling groups and so thanks to our staff, it's fixed, which is good. We have had the sign company come in. You may notice that, well, you know that sign has been out for quite a long time. This sign out here, the smaller sign, or the sign for just the library, they can't do anything with those lights. So they're getting us a cost to update those lights to L and D and then we'll have to decide what we want to do, if we want to do that or not. Down at the the sign that's shared by the three organizations, there's something funny going on. There's power, but the we're still trying to figure out there's, somehow there was a switch that was put in at some point, so they're going to come back again, but and they're going to come back this time with an electrician of their choice because our, we've had our electrician go twice and not be able to fix it. So now they're going to have an electrician that's familiar with the signs.
Should be the guy who originally put it in?
Well, it's the same company, so they came out, so now they're bringing they need to fix something electrical. The sign is, there's power, but it's not the right power. I'm not sure why it just stopped working midway. That doesn't make sense to me, but we're working on it. Yeah, so we're, we're working on it. This is fixed. Yep. That took a while to get them to come out here. That was not easy to get them here. Which is frustrating because they're, they're, they're a company in Massachusetts. So that's, doesn't bode well, because it's been less than a year. Is there a warranty on it?
Yeah, I bet you it's still there.
I think it's still, I think it's still under warranty. The other, the other piece is we had the camera, or the new, not the camera, the new projector. It's still over in the multipurpose room, so that was broken, remember, and so now we had to replace it in there. So all of this A V equipment and all this electronic stuff is back up and then, back up and running.
Related to that, I mean, I have to say, every time I come in, it's what makes me happy to see all the people coming in these rooms, is it continuing to grow, it's continuing to grow. That's amazing to me how many times I come in at different times of day and there's stuff on the signs or there are people in the rooms and it gives me joy. Yeah, and I, I would think for staff, it's very, I mean, I don't know if that's part of why the library traffic is up, but I don't think it's part of it.
I'm sure it's got to be part of it. Just there's, there's a different demographic that's coming into. It's a, it's a shifting, changing demographic in there, which is nice. It's more diverse, um, there, and, and there's also a lot of families coming in at the weekend. So we've got our regulars who are here during the day every week. And then over the weekend, it's busy and it's just people that are kind of here once a month. Or, I don't know how often they're here, but they're not, not necessarily regulars, although there are some just weekend regulars.
We talked for a minute about the strategic work during this.
Absolutely. Do you want to kind of give an update of where we are? I see. Sure. So we have, in, as you know, we've engaged our strategic planning consultant, Maxine Flywais and Associates. Maxine Flywais and Erica Burr, we had a kickoff meeting with Lynn, Mary, Michael and I attended the kickoff meeting. It was great. We've gotten, we have a long list, a long to-do list, and it's a very quick process. Today, we received draft surveys for the community survey and the staff survey, so we'll be getting back to them with a few edits, but it looks great. I was really positive with those surveys. And we are looking for key community members. We will be having, we think we're going to have four focus groups. We have to go back to them and, and ask them to add an additional focus group. We're looking at, and correct me because I don't have this in front of me, so I'm going to have my member here. We're going to have seniors, community, uh, community organizations, so nonprofit organizations. Businesses, local businesses and parents of children. We're going to hope, where are we to add them on?
Will that be a fifth?
That'd be the fifth.
Sorry, and fifth, and, and seventh graders. So those will be our, uh, community focus groups. We will have ten key informant interviews where we'll be interviewing, actually, the consultants will be interviewing one-on-one over the phone for an hour, up to an hour, uh, for people that we have identified that, you know, really have a lot to offer, so we'd like to interview them on the phone. And then we have a community advisory committee that we're trying to put together right now, made up of key representatives of the community. And then we have a work group that is staff and board.
And friends.
And friends. Staff, board and friends. So the, the consultants will be on site for three days and they'll be holding the, uh, community, one giant community focus group in addition to all the individual focus groups. So they'll hold one giant community focus group, individual focus groups, and then they'll meet with staff, board and friends while they're here.
Three different.
Right. So it'll be a busy.
And they'll be with the community advisory council first.
Yes.
And that will be the twenty-seventh, we think, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. But it will definitely be that.
Which is not a board meeting week, so that might be.
And I did send an email out to everyone today. So it's very, especially for the informant interviews, because we are literally supposed to give them the list of ten people who are agreed to be interviewed by Friday. So we are asking that you, we brainstormed a lot and put together a list, and we're asking for your thoughts within basically twenty-four hours to really say, oh, I know somebody, because there are some that just have an organization, but we didn't know the person. If you know a person that you think would be good, or if we've missed a person you think would be a good addition, or if you have really strong opinion about somebody on our list. We would love to know, but you know, it's a very short term. You sent that to, I sent it, like a three or four.
To AJ. Oh, yeah, I didn't open it because I have to do more. I'll look at it because I do have, and I was just going to ask you, are you looking for names? Because I, and I did reach out to someone, I think it's, it'd be great. And she asked what, what would that entail? So I wasn't a hundred percent sure. I, I wasn't sure like where she would be, would she be one of the two, the ten, would she be in a focus group? So I wasn't sure exactly how to respond without like scaring her off. Saying the wrong thing, saying, oh, you're going to be involved for weeks, maybe, because she's busy, but she's very, I think she'd be great.
So I tried, I mean, with that email, I tried to list like sort of what the expectation is of a person who does that. But call or emailing if you have a question and
Definitely. All right, I'll look at that and then see, because I have a couple of other
We have a bit more time for the community advisory, advisory council.
But, but the sooner we get it, the better.
So now it matters.
You know, the greater chance that they can, to see like where they would plug in.
Right. I had a question on the review report. Does, I just, probably a phrase I should understand, on the bottom of under operational excellence, fourth or fifth page on, oh, it's not. What is a shared service desk model for an administrative assistant position? Is that something that I, does that just mean sharing a desk?
I, I thought that was one of the items that I was going to question.
What is, let me see, what, what each bottom?
I believe what, what it was is they're able to
It's the admin assistant.
They were considering doing, see, I think they're
Oh, yes, so, I'll, I can tell you what that is. So what we had talked about, um, I don't see it, here it is. Okay, so these are, these are kind of two different things. The shared
Service desk.
Desk model is something that we had originally discussed, um, combining the reference and circulation desks. And then circulation and new services desks, and we talked, we talked about it during COVID, that was one of our priorities for this year. We did a lot of work on it. So that is something, um, we have a carryover from last month's report too, that, that line. But that's
That's what I thought. I thought it was somewhere, some, that doesn't belong there, that doesn't go together with the admin assistant position, we called it charter.
Yeah, I think, I think
But after that.
Right, I think that's a carryover from last month, because last month was a year to date. It was twenty-twenty-two, so that's a, that's a carryover, that one sentence there ultimately was determined, yeah, that, that's all a carryover. But if you look at that last, there, if you look at the last post about the target paper. That's, that's for this, right now, this year. That's a good question. It's not on the, it's not on a
It's not supposed to be in there.
Sentence. Yeah, look at last Yeah, look at last month's report. It's, it's in last month's report and it makes sense because it's got a full, a paragraph. At least it should. I'm sure it has a paragraph in last month's.
Please try. Understand why I didn't understand.
Yeah, that makes total, that makes total sense. Right, I'm the, the bit.
Top of the page.
So last week, we also, oh, the audit, the auditors came last week too, Thursday and Friday. So they're done with all their field work. And I've given them everything, all the functional expenses and. Be good to go. Kind of wrap up a lot of stuff here.
Yeah, they thought that they would be done in, in the month.
Yeah, though they, they told me within a week, but I'm not going to promise anything.
But you need those figures for your.
Yeah, so I need to, I need those figures for the AUD and right now, so right now I'm also working on. The annual report to library development. So I'm starting with the non-financial part in hopes that. Because there's a lot of statistics and I had a lot of help from the team here at the library, they will statistics. No, that's not easy. But, but I think we're in. Close agreement, so I don't think there's going to be any giant shifts.
And then this year is not, there's one training, trustee training piece for that. That's going to be next year, correct?
I think they asked for it this year, but it's not a requirement. So it's just a yes or no question.
Right, no, we weren't tracking.
And, but they're just going to ask a yes or no question and everybody here had training last year. So that's, we're, we're in good shape even if it was required. Any more? Any other questions, Bridgette?
Now I guess we'll move on to your personnel memo.
I'm sorry, wait, I just wanted to point something about the, the book thing. Is there a price for that?
Well, it was purchased for two thousand dollars.
Then I read something that you want to look into where books can be dropped. Twenty-four hours a day.
Well, that was, that was the, that was what we, that was, that was what we purchased it for.
For, yeah.
And that was the priority in the strategic plan for the year that we were going to have twenty-four seven book donations. But that has since.
So that's not there anymore to.
Right, because staff can't manage it and friends can't manage it. So it's, it's not. Removed it from our list of priorities.
Also, speaking of that, there was mention of the. Free libraries. So is that something like there'll be some ongoing discussions?
Yeah, I would love for, we would love to talk with, with the friends more about that, but I'd love to see if we can really. Formalize, you know, the process there. And that was something that during the final wrap-up equity training, there were some ideas about. The types of books that we put in there and, you know, really being. Kind of mindful of what we're putting in there. So that's something that I think we can talk with the friends about.
Can I just ask a question? When I've gone, I always knock.
Yeah.
And for some reason, it seems like one always is kids' books, like ninety percent kids' books, and one is like ninety. Four hundred percent.
Is that the one by Janay? And then the one is by the.
Yeah, and I didn't know if that was intentional or just random.
Um, and I've gone and I've refilled, you know, along the way. The house across the street, like directly across. Um, the little girl came out, her name's Hadley. She says, I'm going to help you. I'm going to fill, she's so cute. She's got to be, I don't know, like. Ten years old or something and so she might put books in there. I don't know, like, but, um.
I mean, I didn't know if it was intentional because I did it like two or three times. I went and I skipped always what's.
I'd say, because I've tried to mix, but I don't know. You don't know what's really goes on.
Are you doing it right now?
I have, I have gone to, I mean, I've stopped, but I think because the weather's so nice, I might, um.
But you're, you're the only one that's.
So far, I, right, unless somebody else is doing, and then if anyone else is restocking, that's great. Um, I haven't asked it. But I've, I, like, you know, people, friends have dropped off books and just along the way, I've just been, you know, I'm here and I've grabbed books. I wonder if by Janay too, the children's books gets scooped up right away.
Oh, because of maybe.
So child-centric. That maybe those go immediately.
Check, we hide them too much.
I know, yeah, but we should just get some extra.
Dog comes out. And that's better than a community member.
It's great.
So many, she knows some stuff.
Yeah, get her on the, get her on.
Anything else? Personnel memo? There's a, uh, a, it's really a retirement of Leanne Collob, longtime, our time library clerk. We're all very excited to see Leanne go, which deserves a retirement. And that, um, she deserves it tremendously. Um, so she, she's been in many times. This didn't make it to last month's agenda. But she officially retired in December eleventh. So, so far we've been able to. Kind of adjust and transition some hours with some other people on staff to fill her, to fill her role. We will have to hire. Uh, before this spring, we're going to have to hire before the summer for sure. As I'm thinking of, we're going to have to hire. And we also, we have one person who we know of that will be leaving us the fall because she's a, she's a part-time clerk. She's going to law school, which is great. For us.
But we don't have to act on any.
You just have to accept it. You have to accept the personnel memo.
So we just need a motion. We're going to make a motion to exempt. Charlie, second. Michael. Any more discussion? In a vote, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, and vote business. Want me to talk about this, Scotty, contact? I can sure. So we received the contract from Skodek and you, the callers. We, um, I won't give the whole history, but. Right now, we budgeted a set amount, um, for Skodek. We then sent them a letter and then they put it in their budget and then this is, they generated basically a contract.
Well, we sent them a contract too.
We sent them.
That we, that we wrote.
Oh, this you did?
Oh, yes, we do it every year.
They sent their own.
But they, they always send their own.
But luckily it's the same amount.
So good.
It's waiting for the children, wasn't?
Yeah, it was also like, oh.
And it's, no, they had all these, all, all this. So this would authorize me to sign. That, and that, which is in the amount that was budgeted, so.
Has it been corrected?
It was correct, was correct. Yeah, really, it's. Also possible, so I will entertain a motion to. Be assigned that contract. Michael and Amy. Any new conversation? Uh, we are planning to, uh, to talk to them. For the more longer range, we would love to get a con, a contract established. Or formula. Or some provisions that. Made it not every year a question about. What it is, you know, because that honestly is difficult for us and it's difficult for them. When nobody really knows what is the basis for next year's cost. Planning to do that. And actually, I think we had a little conversation and. We are going to talk about strategic planning and that's the, so we're needing to get this moving forward.
But realistically, I think we've got so many things going right now. That we will start a discussion with them and start a process of looking at it because this. It, it's fairly involved, many, many things you could look at on, on this contract. So I think they'll have a working thing. I think for this year's budget, there'll be one more year. Of doing the same percentage as these. What we've done the last several years and with the workforce, then for the next cycle.
Yeah, any conversation, any questions? Did I see the town of Skodek? Do we have people coming for the strategic plan?
We have.
Okay, so yeah, we tried to make sure they were in every focus group. Definitely on the community advisory council. And there's also some of the key informant individuals. We tried to make sure there was good representation.
I thought I saw that, but I wanted to be sure.
Yes.
It's a log on here, I guess. Because I don't have the wifi on it, so.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, I'll entertain a vote to authorize me to sign this contract. All in favor? Unanimous. Um, I. Not really, I need a motion, but I don't mind. But I would like to appoint to last, at the last meeting I talked about this, ADHOC Facilities Committee. Um, that would really be working and I invited anybody interested to volunteer. The idea is it's a relatively short-term committee, at least at this point. Um, whose purpose is really to work through the building. Condition survey process, uh, is beginning actually this week, on February sixteenth, the. Contractor that we brought in is going to meet with the facilities committee and Joe to begin the process. Um, so I had a couple volunteers and Michael Booth, me and Charlie. Is that how I say it? Okay, and Charlie has agreed to be the chair of that committee. So.
Can, can you make it during the day?
And so I would like to get that in minutes, but I do not believe that requires. Questions or comments or welcome.
Thank you.
So that, they will begin their work right away and they will be work. On the agenda. At that committee end, so that's when this process is done and must be decided.
Which in all likelihood.
I expect it to. We'll take that step when we're, when we get there. Poor Charlie's like, what? Oh, you'll get used to it. It's all good. Okay, with that, we'll take some liaison reports to begin.
So on the book up in, I did write to Tim and Nyla and Eric Helpus, some gave turbage. Coming blast to all the libraries to see if we can find somebody that. Maybe so I've got the dimensions and what it would take to move it, so. Did you ask for two thousand dollars? We paid for it.
The tablet was negotiated down from like three, four thousand.
At this point, I just want it off the property.
I hear you.
If I can use it, that's great. Dollhouse, I don't know. So, uh, that is in the process. Um, the other biggest thing that we've been doing is the motion campaign. We started with our. Online email, the last one out, and Lynn was the very first, little star, first one to use it. Um, as a test group. So, um, we did get about a dozen online registrations, which was good. Uh, for a first time out. The mail house has all our stuff and hopefully the next week the two years of paper forms go out to the community. Um, everything is on Keyla, the database is updated, so we're fully switched over out of Excel into Keyla.
I have one question about. You have an individual. You have a household, I think it's twenty, thirty. And you have a senior that's ten. And then you have students. How do I do two seniors?
You can do it the one person do, is they each signed up separately and they get twenty dollars. You can, it's, it's open for.
I did it.
I do it as a family and I, you should put a contribution in.
You can do the other, you can just pick others, put in which one. On the other end, I can figure out what they need to.
I, I, I noticed that when I did it online and I actually put it in the comment box. They wanted to do the two seniors and then.
My plan is to scrap that whole system going forward. I would like something different, it's like hatred. It's something literary terms and it's an excellent level, you know, just something like that. It's not based on demographic. I don't think that's right. The state age, I think it should be something different. So that's my plans to. I need a chance to get in there and get this out, but next year I hope that you won't even see it like that. It'll be completely different. And something fun like work. But good job.
I mean, it was wonderful to finally be online.
I actually went on today and looked and then I said, do I go through this and try and figure this out? Or do I just print it out and put it? I love you, Mike.
We, we, we just got onto teams and, uh, that always.
Well, my team still isn't working.
There are many people in this room who have worked hard to get us. Everything online. So thank you very much for taking it over the finish line. My, my goal is that maybe by three years from now, we have seventy-five percent that are available. It's small expense that we just, melt a few folks, but where you're not used to. So that's a long-term goal, but this was step one and we're here. So that's it. So our membership can be exacted and I'm sure this is a lot of. Um, the last thing that we're going to be working on is there's a group meeting on Thursday to discuss the next sale. Um, and whether or not we're going to be doing a global sale. We have been doing so well, we have a pretty ongoing sales. Um, so last January, we did about two hundred sales, this January, two thousand sales. Because this is doing so well, the shed is not, you see, normally we have about five hundred and thirty boxes of books that took place for the last sale. And that was a low number for us. Right now, it's a hundred, some odd books, a box of books in the shed.
Wow.
Um, so, you know, if we double that number, we need to do an April sale of about three hundred books. So we could build it as a mini sale, but we don't want people to walk in and go, oh, that's it, and never come back. You know, we have a reputation for having a very good sale. So. My team is going to be meeting, um, Thursday. We're brainstorming, should we do this, should we go this year, should we do a mini sale, should we slow down the ongoing sale? So we look at all the different options and think of accommodation, friends board, but. If we don't do the April sale, I'm sure, no matter what we do, we're going to get some slack in April. So scale down sale or we can no sale. So it's up. There's a reason behind it. It's a good problem to have. Our books are sold on the ongoing shelf, but. We don't let that crack up. We would need to do a sale. And there's a cost and a lot of volunteer effort that goes into it. So we want to be sure that we're getting the thanks in the book, so.
Would it be worth asking or like pushing for donations or?
Um, I mean, we're getting good donations. It's just that they're selling.
That's fair.
So, and the puzzles are going crazy. People love them and now people know they're collecting them. We are getting a massive amount of puzzles every day and they're still crazy. So. It's going really well. We're getting good donations and that garbage has dropped off, that the problem that. Stuff that went straight to the recycle bin and became an expense for the library that has dropped off. We're getting some good quality donations, so. It's not for lack of donations. It is where we're doing a very good job of making sandwiches.
Is the group thinking, uh, children's festival again or?
We are not considering that right now. Um, we are thinking about doing the children's books during the kickoff, the summer reading program. For being those two that can see better. So that would be another set of books that would not go to the sale. And parents really liked how you do the April sales well, so. I just want to make sure that the perception and people walk away happy. So that's what we're trying to do, make these books happen. Um, at this time, I don't think it would be interesting to do a children's festival. Of something that's more appropriate and then on staff, a teacher's place. Sort of open to ideas. I guess we had kind of outgrown, I mean, the children's festival would be current more than we.
There was a lot.
Yes, but I was at two.
So I didn't know, I didn't realize. So last year you did a little bit of a children's book.
You did a fall sale. Right during the first week and it was crazy. Made a lot of money during that. But right now I have like six boxes of children's books for just going so fast. Promise to have them. So that's what's going on. No, I do not, but I do have somebody. See, you know, you're not in a plane to me. I can act like. Someone who's considering it at the moment because she would amount.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I have one more question on the if we pay by the credit card. Is are you charged a percentage?
So there's seven.
Does it have those amounts considered this and it was a varying amount?
Add seventy six cents to help cover the processing fees, so you have the option.
My question is, does I normally include donation with it? I want the donation to be diminished. By by the processing fee.
Well, if you look at it in the future, not this year, but in the future, I will be telling you, so I'll be saying for printing the postage. So they also have a fee.
And is it seventy six cents per transaction?
So it's.
That's what it says on the website.
Well, no, depending on which one you check, it's a different percentage.
They established.
That's a transaction fee that's based on percentage. Um, but in the long run, if it stays, I mean, the mailing is custom is about six hundred dollars. So if, you know, I have to look at the transaction fees in the long run and, you know, the increase in donations of the change in structure. I think it's just assigned at times and it's part of what we need to do.
It is.
And a lot of people have checked that they're paying.
There's a lot of places that that uh. You know, they now have if you pay by if you pay by credit card, they add a charge for it. So it's, you know, and what is it? It could be three percent or something.
So that you have the option, but but you don't have to help cover the processing fees. It's it's.
That's not what I'm concerned.
You're saying if you make a valid donation, I will pay more, more that will come out as a fee.
Yes.
Yes, I understand. It is what it is. Yeah, so yes, we we as a friend get less money than we would if we had a check. But in the long run down the road, I think it's.
Hopefully you'll also get more people donating.
Right, you would have.
Just the.
It's quick. Check, I'd be less than fine.
Yeah, for me, I I would just pay, like if I was doing a small donation to the dollars like six or seven of them. If you're doing the thirty dollars, I think that's a million dollars or something. Most people are saying, yes, I'll pay the thirty four dollars. If they're doing a large amount, I see that they're not checking that up, so just making the donation and not paying. The transaction fee. But I'm still getting way over what they would have done, so. And if it's less than the end for the treasurer to have advantage.
Do you pay do the other forms? Do you guys do the other forms like PayPal, Venmo?
Right now we've only set up a PayPal which I'm very proud of.
Okay.
I think there is some Kila Pay that I'm checking. It's a level. Not today.
That's step one. We're on.
Any other questions? Julia, not uh Ed's not here tonight, so we have no town report. What do you, Tom?
Great. I came across a list that told me that word liaison is one of the most commonly misspelled words in the English language.
Really? But did we spell it right?
You did. I'll be keeping track of it.
It's funny, cause when you said that, I was typing the word liaison and I spelled it incorrect.
Yeah, yeah.
It autocorrected.
Yeah, apparently it shows up on resumes, cause people always consider themselves be a liaison or something like that. So, you know.
Second eye.
It killed, it's a killer.
It'd be terrific for worlds.
Yeah, like, oh, too many letters. First of all, thanks for letting me participate in the DEI presentations. They were pretty cool. I mean, I learned a lot. It was a it was a good thing, I think for all of us, particularly for me.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
DMV still working on getting into ninety nine Route Route Four. It's coming along. They estimate March, but I'm gonna say April, just to be a little bit pessimistic and maybe look more realism. It's gonna be wonderful. It's gonna be state of the art. It's gonna have pretty much everything you need, special licenses. All that's gonna be a great spot. And Detroit, DMV is gonna continue to, it's just expansion.
This one could be appointment only as well or?
I I not initially, no. I mean, you can make appointments for certain things, but the general, you know, going in uh should not be appointment. Uh, but again, subject to change. We'll see how the workload is. It'll be a little bit chaotic the first couple of weeks it's in there, so. Uh, but it's not the intent. For certain specific tasks, it'll be uh appointment.
Just to read FYI.
It'll be appointment only, but it's it's not meant to be like that. It's meant to be a quick in, a quick out when you get there.
Is there county clerk office there?
County clerk, well, the county clerk is located next to the courthouse. But it's where there's a county, there's a DMV office that the county clerk runs in Troy. And the DMV office that the county clerk will run in in East Greenwich, but the county clerk's office itself is right next to the, it's behind the courthouse in Troy.
And that's just.
That's gonna stay there, yeah.
That's gonna stay.
Yeah, yep. Uh, sales tax is booming. Uh, county uh received over a hundred and twenty million dollars in revenue in sales tax. It's it's really unbelievable. It's probably because of online, um, you know, transactions. People are ordering things from their homes in Mensa County and it's been it's been quite a thing. I don't know how long it's gonna last, but. Not an upward upward spiral. Um, and an important, really important note, this this fentanyl crisis is really, really bad. Uh, I mean, I know that sounds, you know, obvious, but. I was looking at stats recently and it had the breakdown of, you know, Rensler, Rensler mailing and East Greenwich mailing that looked pretty good. And then when you dive deep on it, since a lot of us have a Rensler mailing address, it really is a problem here in East Greenwich. Uh, if you see some stats, it shows like Rensler a certain amount in East Greenwich. We look pretty good if you're just looking at East Greenwich. But if you're looking at the town of East Greenwich that has a Rensler mailing address, we're we're pretty, we're in pretty bad shape. You know, we're not that, Troy is set aside, but we're up there. And so the next couple of breakdowns, I'm gonna try and have them outline, you know, town of East Greenwich and that'll make it readily apparent. Of what we're having here. So this is not an inner city type situation. This is, this is us. And it's uh. You know, you have people going into the emergency room. There aren't a lot of beds anymore because so people are in the hallways. Uh, thank goodness, we've got the lock zone and we've been a lot of fatalities, but. My gosh, this is, this is really un-un-unbelievable. I mean, I'm old enough. I remember the crack epidemic back in the in in the seventies. You know, people are dying here and um it's gotta be a real focus on 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 what we're doing here as a community. We can't be smug and think that we're we're not in this. Thank you. Sorry about that, but this is just really, really important. And so if, um, and we keep getting reports in the schools and it's just, it's not getting, it hasn't turned a corner yet. Um, the mental health groups are trying to get together and 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 work with the state. The state's been pretty good. I'm trying to acquire more bed bed space, but this is, demand is really out outpacing what we can, we can handle. So if you, again, just by owning messages, we can't be smug because the numbers of East Greenwich look relatively small. Because when you really add the town of East Greenwich mailing address in front, so we're we're right there, so.
Is there a role that you can think of for the library with conventions?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, a lot. I mean, uh, there's a lot of good literature out there. I mean, uh, I think you'll you'll be getting reached out to if you haven't before about posters and and things where you can uh contact uh. Uh, mental health providers in the health department. Uh, training on the lock zone is very important, so if the library, I think you.
We've done it.
Yeah, and if you keep doing that, it's, yeah, I mean, that's. Hate to say it, I mean, it's it's reactive right now. Everybody, if they can, should try and get trained on the lock zone and have a couple of lock zone things either in their house or in their cars. Um.
What what do you mean by that?
It's a, it's kind of a gadget where you, it's not, it's not that. It's a, it's a nose spray and what that does is it generally, yeah, yeah. Yeah, same thing. It's Narcan, yeah. It's uh, and it reverses the effects of the, in in most cases. But here's the the strain of fentanyl, whatever the combination, it's starting to break through on the Narcan now. So it's not as effective as it used to be. Um, we've had cases where uh it started out, we had to do a number of doses doses of Narcan. And until the person would come around. Now we've we've seen some cases where even that doesn't work. So it's just it.
How do you acquire the?
The Narcan?
Yeah.
Um, generally, you know, a lot of doctors are doing it, pharmacies, like Price Drop or Market Thirty Two Pharmacy is not required to have Narcan there. Uh, you can go through training from the health department to uh to uh, you know, it's not that difficult to train. Uh, to be able to acquire Narcan. But most of the pharmacies, we passed a local law uh last year, requiring pharmacies with certain size to have the Narcan here. So I'd say the first step, if you have a local pharmacy, just ask them for the the Narcan. Uh, or no, no lock zone, however you can refer to it. It's real important. It's just so, um. It's it's scary stuff. It's really scary stuff. And uh, you know, you, I'm not advocating drugs or any means, but people are taking drugs that they think are relatively safe and they're not. And now you're starting to break through with the with the sprays. It's not in effect, so. Just that that's sort of that's sort of, and I'm encountering this.
I just uh kind of piggybacking on what Tom said. With the county, the co- the coalition.
Heroin coalition.
I just quickly looked up online and Katie, you can text the word Narcan. Narcon to twenty one hundred or tw- twenty one thousand.
Twenty thousand, yeah.
To arrange for it to be delivered to your doorstep. No, no questions asked. Um, and then fentanyl test strips are also made available to residents now.
And the heroin coalition now has been meeting at Hudson Valley every six weeks. Hudson Valley is very invested in this to try and uh. So the word is just getting out, just and, you know, keep keep spreading the word.
What is the name of the coalition?
Heroin.
Oh, heroin. Do you think it's something like a poster we could put on the community board to advertise that number? Is that something at the library?
Yep.
I mean, cause I didn't know. I know they have all these different text numbers now. It's not just nine one one. There's another. Nine eight eight or something. Is there something, a new one?
Jill, if you would like to note, the county health department.
Right, there's, yeah, so there's different ones.
What you missed?
Yeah, we're on the.
Yeah, you're we're remembering heroin coalition.
Yeah, so well.
I mean, it raises an issue when you talk about even the mental health side of it. It's like in the strategic planning process, we didn't really talk. About engaging those folks in a, you know, like. Cause mental health. Fentanyl issues are good. Mental health issue goes way beyond that.
Where a lot, you know, like. I wonder if there's, I I wonder if we're gonna partner with somebody from the county.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, if you look at that, I mean, I just realized when you said it, we.
We missed that.
We missed it. So if you know anyone in that community that we should love in our. Focus group upon community services and or have on the community advisory council, just it really should have that represented.
I I I, if you would, I'd reach out to Mary Fran Watanis. I mean, she's the co- the co-director of the heroin uh uh task force uh with Sheriff Russo. You know, again, Sheriff Russo's a great guy, but I think Mary Fran might be a little bit more uh a good, a good person to have.
Is she the nurse that, is she?
She's on that, they're a public health director, yeah.
I was also thinking social worker, like maybe social worker for the high school.
Sure.
That's a good idea. And that's kind of a bridge between the mental health, the needs that we're seeing for teens and then this as well.
Yeah, you're right, Katie. I think this is real important of including the strategic plan. I was gonna mention it in my conversations with them. It's uh, it's just barely under the surface and it's just about ready to, you know, to pop back up, pop up.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else? Any questions to Tom? And I guess so, or perhaps so.
Yeah, just have a couple things. I was at the meeting um last week, which was. Really nice. I I continue to enjoy my time on the Upper Hudson Library Award. Um, everyone there is really so passionate about their library and libraries in in general. It's that it it's really, um, it's just a great group to be around. Um, I wanted to give a telephone number if anyone was interested in getting advocacy updates. So Tim gave us a whole uh uh packet for library advocacy day, which is Tuesday, February twenty eighth. And he gave us the legislative meeting schedule. Um, if anyone is interested. In joining up, um, you know, everyone, you know, but there's a, there's an outline of um different times and the offices of. Legislators that that they're going to visit. So, um. If anyone.
Are they gonna do um virtual?
No, no. They're all in person. Yeah. Yeah, it's back to that, so. Um, so advocacy updates, if you if you're interested in, the number is seven one six. Two seven one. Two one eight two. And I have a big shout out that's going to Jill from Upper Hudson. Um, really happy with um your involvement with the loan pools and card registration, any help that you did with that. Um, Tim, they just couldn't, they couldn't say enough about how valuable your involvement was. And they would, they were just like, couldn't pat you on the back enough. Um, they were really, really pleased with.
A lot of work with a lot of people.
Yeah, well, but still you were involved and they, and Joe Burke, um, he really likes you, like, yeah, he's he's great. Yeah, so it was, it was a great, it was great. Um, let's see, if you're interested in any books to read on diversity, equity and inclusion, here are the two that they suggest. Um, Graceland. And South to America. I don't know author. I didn't, I was just, you know, reading as I'm going. Um, but you know, stable organization that's, you know, just doing well. They do still have space at their headquarters for any organization, any business. Um, if you know of anyone that's looking for office space, like turnkey situation.
I will say that I went to a couple of those, Nira Advocacy Center. They're very well organized and really important and really well received. I've my life and other aspects of my life, I've done advocacy. Yeah, it's quite a difference when you go in, everybody loves library, you know. Like ever, I said, wow, I mean, just amazing to go in when everybody just. Embraces you and says, oh, you do such good work. So it's a very empowering day if you have an opportunity to go. It's just, it kind of gives you a perspective. And they obviously control the purse strings, so it's an important day as well, but it's very well worked.
Yes, it's it's one of the things that all the governors have used as a bargaining check. So every year when the governor's budget is released, libraries are cut significantly, so the advocacy is critical.
Right, and and legislators generally are, you know, very positive.
Very supportive.
Yeah, Tim did tell the quick story about how they went to one, um, maybe it was last year, I remember last year. And immediately the legislators was talking about how this Tesla. Uh, the electronics in the Tesla wasn't great and how steering wheel really didn't get warm. And how the governor needs to just calm down about the the electric cars and everything else and. Needs to talk about other things and they were like, okay, could we just, you know, bring it back to libraries? We don't care about your Tesla.
Aren't you just saying we put in some charging stations in that parking lot?
Person of the people.
Yeah, really. Anyway.
Oh, that's that. Hey, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And thank you for representing mid-sized libraries, right?
Mid-sized Rensler County.
Mid-sized Rensler County. Okay, any new business, do you have any new business, does anyone have any new business? We'll entertain the most popular motion of the month. Anyone? Okay, there's Mary.
Come on, Charlie, second.
Come on. Okay, motion is, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I will stop the live stream now. Okay, thank you.